Well, before Onyx goes, I have some really short comments I'd like to make at the outset here. Um, first of all, I want to express my deep appreciation to both Chief Financial Officer, Onyx Jones and Mary Noler. They worked nights, weekends, Mother's Day on this budget. This was, this is not your normal budget. We all know that. And it just took a tremendous amount of effort. And they were really incredible in terms of the effort they exhibited putting this together. And then I also wanted to thank the department heads and all of the other city staff that were very cooperative in putting together such a tough budget. There's nothing enjoyable about putting a document like this together, honestly. Um, the other thing that I want to mention too is that, I mean, this budget presents a spending plan. And this spending plan depicts, um, a certain amount of expenditures for the year. But I want everyone to understand that it is my intent that as we move forward into the year, that I will continue to look for further savings. We will continue to have a hiring freeze in place. Um, and I will be looking for attrition and the results of attrition that can be used to potentially reorganize or create a more efficient operation. So even though this represents the current spending plan, and there's a certain amount authorized in this budget, I will be focused on trying to ensure we enjoy either further savings throughout the year. Um, I'm going to stop there and turn it over to CFO, Onyx Jones.
Thank you, John. Can everyone hear me just fine?
Yep.
Well, I thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. As John indicated, my name is Onyx Jones, and I will be presenting the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. Uh, this year, um, I will get started. I know you're working, Jeremy, on the PowerPoint.
Yep, I'm just pulled up.
Okay, no worries. Um, this year, um, we did want to share with council that we were able to receive uh, the Budget Award from GFOA and as well as CSMFO. That's the next slide, Jeremy. As in the past, um, we have an awesome budget officer who's been with the city for 30 years. And so she's key in us receiving this award each year. So these are very prestigious awards among the cities. And we were able, and we were in receipt of both awards from GFOA and CSMFO. Next slide. Tonight's presentation is going to address, um, some of the challenges that we're faced with as a result of COVID-19 and how it impacts the budget. And then we're going to go over five core principles that we created that are going to help guide us through this time. And the goal is that these principles, once they're applied, they're going to minimize uh, the impact that we will sustain as a result of COVID-19. Uh, we're going to discuss the operating budget. We will go through some of the budget enhancements requests. They're significantly less than in the past. We'll give you an overview of retirement. We'll even discuss the impact of COVID-19 on CalPERS and their investments and what that means to us. We'll talk about the general fund overview, which is really covering the revenues and expenditures for the general fund. We will look at other funds within the city, which are our enterprise funds, our special revenue funds, our internal service funds. So we'll give a highlight of all those areas. And then we'll also look at our capital improvement projects that are budgeted for this year. Next slide. So what are some of the challenges that we're faced with this year? Um, as you can see here in this analysis, um, the three areas that I believe the city will be impacted the most are sales tax, TOT, and business license revenue. Uh, sales tax, as you know, many of the stores in our city, the mall, they have been closed due to the stay home order. And although there's a phased approach to bring those businesses back online, um, we also have to kind of be aware of the consumer spending and what impact that may have. Um, so, um, the other piece that affects sales tax the most, as you look into moving into fiscal year 2021 and the whole year, is that a lot of our sales tax revenues come in during the Christmas holiday time. Um, we have heard from reports that there's a possible second wave of COVID-19 that could come about during the winter season, during the flu season. So we don't know how that is going to impact, um, our city with our sales tax revenue. Will the malls be open at that time? Um, I will say that we had a really good year in fiscal year 20 during the winter season, um, which kind of helped us through the end of this current year. But we were very conservative in our analysis for next year for sales tax. So we do project a 25% decrease or a $9 million decrease in this area. We have met with our consultants, HCL. We've looked at their analysis. We've looked at our own analysis. Um, we are aware of the different industries that are being impacted the most. And so with all that information in consideration, uh, we did, uh, what we think would be a conservative revenue estimate for sales tax. TOT, similar. We have seen dramatic increases from February, March, and April of this year during the stay home order. And so, uh, we can only assume that, um, as the new year comes online, um, many of the hotels will gradually reopen. Um, I don't believe that they're initially when they are open, because there are some hotels that have actually closed in our city. Uh, but I don't believe that, um, the revenues are going to return right away at the level that they previously were. Um, we have estimated a decrease of 50.7% over, um, our budget from last year. Um, we have looked at various reports and information from HCL, um, that has helped us make this determination. Um, we also have actual revenues that we've received recently to help us with this estimate. Um, it is possible that as things come back online, that TOT does do better than what we've estimated, and that would be great. We'll be monitoring that on a monthly basis, and we will be able to make adjustments if necessary. Um, but we did want to be conservative because we didn't want to be in a situation where we overestimated this significant revenue source. And then if we fell, if we fell short, it would really change our budget outlook. Uh, business license revenue is another significant revenue source for the city. We again estimate a decrease of about 51% over last year's fiscal year budget. Um, the reason for this, for business license revenue is because, uh, each year, the gross receipts are based off of the prior year revenues. And so with business license revenue for next year, they're going to base it off of the revenue from January through December of 2020. And as we know, the impact of COVID will probably show in their gross receipts from the month of March through December. Taking that in consideration, we did adjust our business license revenue accordingly. So those are some of the challenges that we're faced with on our large revenue streams. And then, next slide, Jeremy. Here are some of our other revenues. Um, they're still significant and a major part of our revenue, UUT, charged for services and fine for forfeitures. Each of those, um, will have some impact from COVID-19. Um, there was a article recently written that an employee shared with me, um, where the usage of electricity is actually down. Um, and they were very surprised. Um, but we knew with the revenues that we collect from our large companies and our large businesses, um, such as retail, fitness centers, office buildings, hotels, if they have reduced usage, then we're going to have reduced UUT. So we adjusted our UUT accordingly. So it is estimated to decline by about 19% or 2.5 million. Charged for services is estimated to decline by 11.9% or 1.5 million. Uh, we did get a lot of the estimates from the departments such as recreation and community development, who have done an assessment of their revenues and have indicated, um, that they have seen sharp declines in various areas. Um, there have been a lot of programs that have been canceled in parks and recs. It is not clear today how many of those programs will, will be able to bring back. And some will be done virtually, and we don't know what the impact of the revenue will be for that. But we have made some, uh, estimates to accommodate the, that these changes are taking place. And so that is reflected in the budget. And then fines and forfeitures are estimated to decline by about 22.7% or 1.2 million. And this is because there's been a decrease in vehicle code fines, a lot less people are on the road today, and also a decrease in court fines. Next slide. So we put together five core principles that will help us in this transition. One is making sure we focus on essential services, that we support our local businesses, that we're innovative in our approach of how to address, uh, the new stay home orders and how can we continue to provide services to our community. Um, we definitely went through an expense containment exercise with the departments. And we're also forced to look at revenue enhancements because we are clear, uh, before COVID-19 ever came about, that we needed additional revenues here at our city. And it's just made it more important now today more than ever. Excellent. So the essential services, we have budgeted for fiscal year 21. We continue to, our public safety, provide services for police and fire, public works, street maintenance. Um, we have some budget for recreation programs for the community. Um, so we do have some things in the budget that are essential for providing services to our city. Departments, when they have an opportunity, will share what things we have cut. But we are committed to ensuring that essential services continue. We're also, um, forming an ERTF, which is the Culver City Economic Recovery Task Force. And that was actually presented to council on May 11th. And the city will be working with various stakeholders in the community and various employees from the city. We'll work together with the city manager. And I believe that their goal and their mission is really to, um, help the city, um, return to its normal operations and support the businesses in any way that we can to assist them in that process. Um, we all have to win in this scenario, businesses, the city, the residents, um, business owners, everyone, um, has a stake in this. And so this group, this, or this task force is really, um, key in us achieving that goal. Innovation, we've been working with IT to come up with some of the most creative ways of continuing to do business. Um, we have virtual services that we've placed online. Many of our residents, um, that used to come into City Hall are now able to go online and receive the same level of service that they need. Um, as the city starts to reopen, the IT is helping us with ways that we can open safely. And so, um, we have many employees that are working from home. So it's been really imperative that we stay on top of our technology and, um, put investment in that area so that we can continue to support the city during this time. I do see a shift, um, in us doing more things online than face to face. And so innovation is going to be key during this time. Next slide. Expense containment is essential. In a previous presentation that I gave to city council, we talked about some of the budget cuts that we knew were ahead of us. Um, I have highlighted those significant budget cuts that are in fiscal year 2021 budget, 2020-2021. Uh, it came to about 25 million in budget cuts, which is significant. This is not operation as usual. These are significant cuts. And as you hear the presentations from the departments and they share where they have made some of the cuts, I think the members of the community will really understand what an impact this has had to our budget. Uh, we froze 28 and a half vacant positions in the general fund. It generated a savings of 3.6 million. We also, um, are under negotiations with multiple collective bargaining groups so that we can implement a salary freeze across the city. That will generate a savings of 1.8 million. We did eliminate our OPEB pre-funding. As you know, we had set up a plan for pre-funding every year. We were putting money towards OPEB to help lower our liability in this area, which is very significant. Um, however, uh, in this time, we found it essential that we pause on that. And so we have eliminated that from the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. We have also, um, made significant cuts in the areas of travel and training, contract services, and capital purchases, um, up to the amount of 8 million. And so again, as I said, as departments do their presentation, you will start to see where those cuts landed. Um, we also made a decision to defer the replacement of any vehicles and equipment that were planned for 2021, which generated a savings of 1.1 million. And then, this is an effort that was actually done this current fiscal year, fiscal year 2019-2020. We went through all of the projects that were capital improvements that were funded previously by the general fund, which is what, um, which is where we record in Fund 420. So any projects in the budget that are listed in Fund 420, uh, many of them, majority of them, were funded by the general fund. We went through line by line, and we were able to, uh, save about 8.8 million dollars in cash by canceling those projects in fiscal year 2020. So that will help, um, offset the loss that we will likely sustain this year from the last quarter of revenues, um, dropping so drastically. So that cash will be transferred back from the capital improvement fund into the general fund this current fiscal year. Next slide. Revenue enhancements. We have discussed in the past updating our user fee study that was last done in 2014. Um, we have met with departments and a consultant that's working on this study. Um, we will bring it to council when it's, uh, when it's time. Uh, it will help bring the fees that we charge in line with the current market and other local agencies. Um, so that study is underway. We definitely need to focus on our current collections of revenues and ensuring that, um, revenues that are due to the city, that we receive those revenues. Um, we will be auditing our current revenue streams. And this is all a part of, uh, the plan that finance has been putting in place, um, through this year, and it will go into next year. The other piece is that you'll see in the forecast that we present in a few slides from now, that we do have a potential revenue measure, some form of revenue that will generate 12 million dollars in new revenues. We've built that into the forecast so that you could see, um, what it would do and how essential it is, um, for balancing the budget, uh, moving forward. And so that is definitely a part of our revenue enhancements. Um, council, we're looking at various revenue tax measures that we could consider. Um, and so we hope to have that conversation, uh, again, because it is still essential and it is still needed. Next slide. So this is the citywide operating budget. You could see across the board, um, last year in fiscal year 2019-2020, we had a budget total of all of our funds citywide of 334 million dollars. And then you notice for fiscal year 2020-2021, a significant drop to 235 million dollars. And I will go through each of those, um, funds separately. But this just gives you an overall sense that everywhere citywide, we have made cuts. Next slide. This slide has our enhancement requests for this year. Um, you will see that, um, they are very minimal this year compared to this time last year. Um, what we did was really try to limit any, um, requests to things that were essential. Um, the most significant request in the general fund is for legal services that the city attorney will discuss later. Um, council should just know that, um, these costs, as indicated in the budget message, are for essential legal services, um, that are just, they're not in the base budget. So it is an enhancement request each year. Um, but it is for services, legal services that we have to provide, that we're continuing to provide from one year to the next. So it's not that it's a significant increase from last year. It's just that it's not a part of our base budget, and so it's approved annually each year. Uh, the other amounts are, uh, very small, but necessary. Public works and community development, um, both have large projects that need to move forward with public works, this with the trees. Um, so these are just real things that we felt were essential, um, to the progress and movement of the city. And so we have limited to, uh, the total city manager recommended amount of 1.8 million. And then in the other funds, uh, we have a recommended amount of 11 million. It should be noted for the other funds that 8 million of the 11 million is in the housing authority. And that budget is actually funded by, uh, transfers in from the successor agency. And so while that money is continuing to be transferred in, it's a repayment of the successor agency to the housing authority that will continue through fiscal year 2021, 2022. And so, uh, those funds, um, are a separate funding source, uh, than, from the general fund. Um, also something to make note in this, um, enhancement request is transportation. Although there's an increase of 910,000, um, please note that 800,000 of that amount, um, is really from, uh, the equipment maintenance savings that you see below it. Um, there were about six employees, um, that were previously budgeted in the equipment maintenance fund, and then they were, their costs were allocated out to all the departments, uh, citywide. Um, however, it was identified that the bulk of their work, or all of actually their efforts, really were related to transportation. So they were more accurately reflected in the transportation fund. And so this actually created a savings in the general fund and other departments, uh, because the, uh, budget for equipment maintenance was reduced. So there's a total for all funds that are, that is being recommended today of 11 million dollars, uh, for enhancements. Next slide. I'll talk a little bit about, uh, the retirement costs and PERS. As you, uh, may or, you know, may not know, um, the employees do share a portion of the cost for retirement costs. So safety employees pay 9% towards their retirement costs. Miscellaneous employees pay, pay 8% or 7%, depends on when they were hired. And then we have pepper employees who pay a little more. Um, they pay 11.75 for safety and 6.25 for miscellaneous. There are two components to our employer contribution. Uh, one is the normal cost, and I have included the, uh, interest rates that we pay. We pay 10% and 20.6% for safety, 10% for miscellaneous. And then we have the unfunded accrued liability payment that we pay annually. Um, and so for fiscal year 2020-2021, that amount was 7.3 million for miscellaneous and 9.9 million for safety. And I have included the total, uh, UAL, uh, for miscellaneous and safety, um, just so that council is aware of that figure. It's very significant to, uh, the city. Next slide. We were able to, uh, negotiate with the employees to pick up a portion of the employer contribution. And so through those negotiations, there is a maximum of 3.5% that will be picked up by miscellaneous and 5% for safety. Um, in fiscal year 2020-21, you see that the employee cost sharing is estimated to be 2.4% for miscellaneous, and we are at the 5% for safety. It was a gradual increase each year. And so in 2021, safety has reached the maximum amount of 5%. This employee cost sharing is estimated to generate a 10-year cost savings of 14.8 million for public safety and 14.7 million for miscellaneous. So this is a significant savings to the city, um, in relationship to retirement costs. Next slide. This slide is a template that was provided to us from our consultant, Bartel. They do actuarial work for the city, and they look at our, um, retirement, our pension, our OPEB, and they do various analysis for us. Um, there was talk from CalPERS about how their investment portfolio is not doing well. As you know, the market has not done well through this COVID event. And so they were projecting costs, uh, I'm sorry, they were projecting investment turn, investment returns of as low as negative 5% in one of their webinars that they had. Um, their, their hopes is that they can end the year at 0%. The market has recently had an uptick, so they could do better than that. We will know in July, um, how they ended the fiscal year, so we'll have more information at that time. But nevertheless, Bartel put together this template for us that allows us to plug in their investment return. So it will show us what the impact will be to our city individually if CalPERS does suffer a loss. Um, they have a discount rate of 7%. So anything that they get below that will impact us, and it will cause us to have an increase in our UAL payment annually each year. So the tables that you see before you show that in, starting in fiscal year 23, this is the impact that we could have, um, for the loss just for this year. So this, if next year there's a, a loss, then that's a whole separate calculation, but that's just for this year. And so you can see, um, it's pretty significant. If they have a negative 5% return, we could have increases of as high as 7.281 million a year. Um, if it's a 0% return, it's 4.248 million a year. And so either scenario is very significant to our budget annually. Um, and so you will see in our forecast, we have included this, uh, in our forecast and assumptions as well. Um, but I did want to just have council aware of the impact of the investment market and what we might see in our pension costs i- in the future. Next slide. So we'll move over to the general fund and look at our general fund revenue. And you'll see here from this slide that our, again, most significant decreases are showing in sales tax, business license tax, our other tax, which includes TOT, and also utility user tax. And so with that, we show here the different amounts and what percentages of the decrease. But in total... But in total, for the whole year, we show a decrease of 27.1 million dollars in revenues in one year, which is, it's just, it's huge, it's significant. It's nothing that I've ever seen in all my 20 years of working for government, that we had such a significant hit in a short period of time. And so with that, we'll go to the next slide, and I'll show you the makeup of the revenues. You could see that they're pretty evenly distributed across the city. If you were to compare us to other neighboring cities, the one difference you would see is the property tax pie chart would be a lot more significant. And as you noticed from the previous slide, there weren't large decreases projected for property tax. So cities that rely more on property tax are not going to be hit as significant as our city. But because sales tax and UUT and business license are still significant for our city, we are seeing those huge fluctuations. Although I will share with you, I just received a letter from the auditor controller who informed us that although they estimate that we're getting this property tax that is being paid, but it's being paid slowly. And so they've already informed us that our residual payment that we usually get from the ROPS, which is the funding that comes in through the successor agency, and we collect our tax increment, and we pay all of the things that are listed on our ROPS, and whatever's left over, whatever residuals left over goes through a waterfall. Well, we've already been told that that funding likely won't get paid until January of next year. So we have revenues that are out there in the property tax side, but we may not get them until January. So that's something we are following up with and having conversations with the auditor controller about it. But that does highlight that it is possible we're going to see similar effects in our property tax revenue, where the revenues may still be there, but they may be paid slowly. And so we just have to be prepared for that as well. Next slide. On the expenditure side, similar to the revenues, if we were going to take a significant decrease to revenues, we knew we had to cut on our budget as much as possible. I indicated some of the cuts that are reflected in this total decrease of 25 million. You'll see a significant portion of the reduction is shown in transfers. In fiscal year 2019, 2020, we were transferring 5.8 million to the capital improvement fund for projects that were deferred, they had been put off, and we finally, you know, were in a position to fund them. And so we've since unfunded those projects, and that money actually did not move, but that's some of the decrease that you see here. The other decreases throughout the departments are really, contract services took a significant decrease. That's what's reflected in community and development. That's their largest decrease was contract services. Again, with the OPEB funding, with the freezing of the vacancies. And just looking through our O&amp;M budget, which is our operating and maintenance budget, and only keeping budget for essential items. So this is what we were able to cut from the budget. If you go to the next slide, we'll show you the pie chart that kind of shows how the budget is distributed. Public safety obviously are our highest priorities, so they make up a good portion of the, of our total expenditures. But then all the other departments as well are in there. And so this distribution that we have is very similar to other cities. Again, the most significant piece this year is just the decreases that we're taking department wide. And I will add that all of the departments shared in the reduction. There was no one department that bore the burden for the whole city. Each department, based on their budget, they took a 10% cut across the board, just looked for areas that they could decrease their budget by. So it was a proportionate share, but everyone did their fair share for decreases. And the next slide. Where does it leave us for our general fund balance, which is very key during this time? Cities are really monitoring their fund balance because that kind of states the structural health of the general fund. And so we're projecting that we will start fiscal year 2020, 2021 at a fund balance of 87.6 million. This number could be higher if revenues come in higher than anticipated this current year, but we were very conservative. So our projection to start the year, the new year, will be 87.6 million. There you see our revenues, estimated revenues, less our operating expenditures, which has a structural deficit of 13.9 million. And then we have some one-time costs that are budgeted in the budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021 of 1.9 million. So it's a total net decrease of 15.8 million dollars in the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. This is significant because although departments have made significant cuts to the budget, we still have a budget shortfall. So we're projecting to end our fund balance at 71.7 million. But we should be really clear, that full amount is not available for us when we look at how much is in reserves and our reserve calculations. So I gave a breakdown of that 71.7 million below, and you'll see there's some pieces that are non-spendable. So one item, restricted pension trust funds. It should be noted that although it is restricted for pension costs, it could be used if we need it to in the future, because what we could do is use that to offset our budget costs by utilizing these funds to minimize our cost for pension expense in a current year. So although it's restricted, it could be used to help balance the budget. It's just that it can only be used to offset pension costs, can't be used for anything else. So at the bottom, when we look at what's remaining, it's 45.9 million when you take out all of our non-spendable and restricted amounts. And so we're at a 39% reserve level. Per our city's contingency reserve requirement, it is 30%. So we are still above our minimum of 30%. And with these significant cuts, this is phenomenal for our city. But we have to be very smart moving forward and monitor this because we don't want to drop below the 30% if we can. Next slide. Attached is one of the forecasts that we have placed in the budget. The city manager and I have developed numerous forecasts because this is a very volatile market. This is a very changing time right now, and there are a lot of assumptions out there as far as how quickly will the market rebound? And so we looked at various assumptions, and the forecast that you have before you, number one, assumes that we have a five-year recovery. So over the time, you see revenues increasing to the previous level of pre-COVID levels within the five years. We did this assumption, number one, because we don't know how long it will take. But it's also a similar type of recovery that we went through from our last recession back in 2008. And so we use the five-year recovery, it's very conservative. If we have a shorter recovery, we have a forecast for that, and we will use that. We also are assuming that there will be an additional revenue stream of 12 million by 2024, so the city must be committed to securing that 12 million in revenues. And then we also, of course, have included all of the budget cuts that we have proposed. And then we did assume the CalPERS investment return of 0%. So you see that in the pension costs, as that goes up each year. So with that, you'll see the revenues are gradually increasing. So we start out in 2021 with a revenue estimate of about 103 million, and it gradually increases over time. And then similar to the expenditures, we factored in all of the budget cuts that were included in the budget, and then we show gradual increases over time. There are many assumptions in these different line items that can be shifted and changed depending on the true market. We do include the growth that is still occurring in our city. There's still development coming online, so we have included that in our assumptions. And so that is factored in. But what it shows you at the very bottom is, in the general fund balance, you'll see it's highlighted in blue there, that we, again, project that we'll be at 71.7 million at the end of fiscal year 2020, 2021. And then it drops down, and I guess it gets as low as about 42 million. So we will likely at that time be below our reserve requirement. However, the assumption in 2024 is that the revenues will start to come in, and that will pick up. And so then you see the fund balance starts to increase over time. And so we start rebuilding the reserves. But it really, what's key in this whole forecast is the 12 million in additional revenue. And we can go to the next slide. So this concludes our conversation of the general fund, and now we'll move into the other funds, and we have those summarized here. Again, really, the only thing I wanted to highlight here is to show that we have made decreases in the other funds as well. We'll go to the next slide. Special revenue funds, there were decreases in this fund. We have a lot of capital projects that are budgeted in the previous year, and they'll just be carried over if they're not completed this year. But we did not budget a lot of new projects in this fund. So the decrease that you see are projects that we budgeted in previous years, but we did not budget this year, moving into fiscal year 2020, 2021. Similar conversation with the capital improvement fund. If you look at it, there was a budget of 26.5 million in fiscal year 2019, 2020, and that will be carried over. And then there was 16 million in new projects budgeted in fiscal year 2019, 2020. However, when you compare that to fiscal year 2020, 21, we're only projecting new projects of 5.2 million. So you see a decrease of 37.7 million because of, simply because we have really streamlined our new budget for the next year. So it's very small compared to previous years. And then in our internal service fund, I previously discussed how we were able to create savings in the equipment replacement fund by not doing any replacement of vehicles or equipment for 2021, so that's a decrease. And then in our equipment maintenance fund, we reallocated six employees into the transportation fund, so that helped cut the O&amp;M budget. So there was a decrease there of 1.4 million. And then just to remind everyone that the way internal service funds work is, if there is a decrease in their budget, there's a smaller amount that has to be allocated to all the departments citywide. So we all share in that savings because that budget has been decreased. And specifically, the general fund also shares in that savings. Next slide. We'll move on to the refuse fund. The refuse fund, the expenditures are less than the previous budget by 1.5 million. So there were some projected cuts in the refuse fund. We also estimate that the expenditures will exceed revenue by 1.4 million. However, in speaking with the public works director, he's going to monitor this and cut where he needs to cut to ensure that the fund ends in, is close to break even as possible. We have noted that per the attached document, the fund balance is below the reserve requirement. So therefore, these are the changes that the public works director will be implementing. There's also a rate study in place because we have determined that the current revenue for the refuse fund cannot support the operation costs. Some of the costs have gone up, but also there really should be enough money that comes in to create like a replacement of capital funds, where you're putting money aside, so when you have large capital replacement projects, you have funding to do that. And we don't really generate enough revenue in that fund to be able to be positioned to do that. I personally met with the department, and we did talk about the impacts of COVID-19, so they are very aware of it. They are monitoring the revenues. Some of the businesses initially either stopped service or decreased their service levels, so it did impact the revenues on the business side, and so that is being monitored. And if we need to come back, we will during mid-year. But it is something that will be looked at on a continual basis. Next slide. The other fund is the transportation fund. That's a part of the enterprise fund group. I will allow Rolando to share the study that he has done with his consultant. They have done a five-year financial forecast. So similar to how we did a general fund forecast, they have done a forecast from the transportation fund. They have identified areas to create savings. They've also identified some revenue loss that the fund is sustaining just through COVID. And so they're going, Rolando's going to bring that information forward and kind of share what is a result of that. And so once we review the forecast and finalize those numbers, that will be brought forward with the adopted budget. Next slide. The sewer fund. So the sewer fund had a decrease of 16.9 million in expenditures from the prior year, due mostly to capital improvement projects that were ongoing in the prior year, and they are not projected, and they're not part of the 2021 budget. There is a projected budget deficit of 708,000. However, this, the improvements that are currently being made in the sewer fund, once those projects are completed, it will improve the processing, and so some of the costs are expected to decrease. And the sewer fund is expected to be able to break even in the future. We will monitor the impact of COVID-19. As I indicated in the past, the property tax, the payment of property tax revenue seems to have slowed down. And so sewer fees are currently paid through the property tax process. And so if there is an impact to that, we will monitor it. Sewer fund was also successfully able to refinance its bond in fiscal year 2020, and we generated $304,000 of savings in the annual debt service payment. So that was very significant for the fund. As well as we were able to acquire 12 million in additional funding to complete some of the projects that were previously committed with sewer fund, fund balance. So having that 12 million in cash for those projects now frees up the cash that's in the fund balance in the sewer fund to be used for operations and not just for capital improvement projects. So that was significant to that fund, and that fund will meet the reserve requirements with this transition. Moving on to the next slide. The municipal fiber fund. I'll, you know, I will let You know, I will let John add more information to this. What is, what I just wanted to highlight for the municipal fiber fund is that for fiscal year 2020, 2021, we do estimate that revenues will come in at about 3.6 million, and it will actually exceed the budgeted expenditures by about 1.5 million. So we have budgeted the working capital debt service payment to the general fund. That is part of the budget for 2021. If we are able to, we will also budget the construction loan repayment. But we, we did budget the working capital loan repayment. However, as I have shared previously, we do estimate however that this fund will not be able to make the payment for the current fiscal year, which is fiscal year 2019, 2020. And so we are going to be requesting at the, in June, when we bring the budget to council, that council approve the write-off of the construction loan and a deferral of the annual working capital loan payment. This is authority that was given to council back in November 2017 that allowed council to be able to do this because there was an understanding at the time that if the fund was not solvent at the end of the year, that it would have the opportunity to defer the loan. So it will pay, the working capital loan will get paid. It will pay probably higher interest because there is interest rate being assessed. So that is being calculated. The general fund will receive those funds. And if council approves the write-off of the construction loan, that will be done for 2020. That's all I have for that fund. We'll go to the next slide. Now, just to share the capital improvement projects that we have budgeted for this upcoming fiscal year. It does come to about 9.2 million. You do see the different funding sources that are available. So this is not all general fund. There's about 1.8 million as part of the general fund. But then there are other funds throughout the city that are setting aside budget for capital improvement projects. Just a side note, currently, the total CIP funded, and you can find this in your budget document. It starts at page 443. The budget that we have already in fiscal year 20, plus the 9.2 million that we're budgeting in 2021, comes to a total of 84.2 million. So there are still a lot of projects being completed citywide that are out there. So just wanted to share that with, with everyone. And the next slide shows where the projects are, what categories. So we have street and alley improvements. We also have facility improvements, urban runoff management. There's other miscellaneous that make up the 1.6 million. There's sewer improvement projects and technology improvement projects and parking improvements. So all of these projects are budgeted for fiscal year 2021. So we have new projects coming online of 9.2 million. That's citywide. And that is complete the presentation. Just to remind everyone, we do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow for part two of the department presentations. And then we will do our final public hearing, our budget, public hearing, and the full adoption of the budget on June 22 at 7:00 p.m. And that's it. I'm available for any questions.
Questions, colleague? Should we, we can start with council member Small.
Thank you, thank you so much, Ms. Jones. It's an excellent presentation. And I, I think it's taken us a long way towards understanding what we need to, what we need to be doing here. And I don't have any questions at this time that won't wait for the individual departmental presentation. Thank you.
Council member Salibet.
Thank you. I want to thank you and Ms. Nola and the city manager for your hard work on really, you know, taking, turning on a dime and looking at the projections in a very uncertain time. I mean, none of us want to be in this current pandemic situation. But I do feel so fortunate as a city to have a team like yours on board where, where you've got a steady hand, a lot of experience, and, and they're able to really do a lot of analysis and recommendations that will serve our city well in this uncertain moment. So really, thank you. And I feel very guilty that you were working on Mother's Day. I, I did have a couple of quick questions. One is that in, in fiscal year 1920 and 2021, are we using any general funds or proposing to use any general funds for some of our restricted fund expenditures that are part of our, if you, you had a slide with the fund balance, and this is our general fund reserve balance. And I'm just wondering if we're using any of the general fund when we could be using some of those restricted funds to make those expenditures instead?
We are not proposing to use the restricted funds. We currently are above our minimum reserve requirement of 30%. So it really is coming out of the available funds in that area. If council gave direction, the 10 million could be used for pension, but it is not included in the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget.
Just because of the structural deficit, would it make sense to use restricted funds for the things that they were meant for as opposed to general fund at this point in time?
I don't think we need to use it at this time. There's a couple of reasons. One and foremost is the market is doing so poorly right now. If we were to take the funds out, we'd actually take a loss because the market is not doing well. And it's probably better to wait for it to come back so that we can get the full value of those funds. So that's the first reason. The second reason, again, because we have a surplus in other areas, I would hold off on that. We don't know what may happen here in the future. Yes.
I think we're talking about two different things, I think. You're talking about the pension trust fund. And so let's talk about what the definition of restricted funds is.
Maybe you could go to the slide.
Maybe go to the slide.
Can you tell me what page the slide is on?
Sure. It just said fund balance. That's all I remember.
Number 19. Slide 19 is to be.
There it is.
Because the pension is one of them, but we have other ones, you know, other, you know, recreation facilities reserve.
Oh, yes, yes.
Contingency, et cetera.
So the, yes, all of that is included in the 45.9 million.
Her question is, her question is, Onyx, let's use recreation facilities reserves as an example, that 2.3 million? I think her question is, is the general fund paying for recreation facility improvements when this 2.3 million could be used for that purpose? Is that your question, council member?
Yes. And for this fiscal year 2021, no, there aren't any capital projects being proposed that we could use these funds on. However, they do help make up the 39% that we have there.
We're counting them in that 45.9 million number at the bottom because even though they, they are restricted only by policy.
Right.
The council by vote could turn those into reserves available for any purpose.
Okay. And, and because you mentioned it, Onyx, earlier with the, you know, the state of the market, are these, the pension fund, trust fund is one thing. Are any of these other funds actually invested in the market?
So right now, our city portfolio are in, maturity of them are in government bonds. We have maybe 10% in corporate bonds. As they mature, we currently are putting our funds into LEAF, which is our local agency investment fund that many cities across the state use LEAF to invest their, their cash. And right now, they're paying the highest return. So we're allowed to move up to 75 million in LEAF. And so because there aren't any good bonds to invest in, as the bonds mature today, they're being reinvested into LEAF.
And council, council member, that restricted pension trust fund, that's the only one that has exposure to the market, the stock market.
Okay.
And the reason it does is because we, we made a choice. We took that out of our general fund balance, and we could have sent that money directly to CalPERS to pay down our unfunded actuarial liability. But instead, we made a decision to put it in our own trust fund. So we're doing our best to try and achieve, you know, returns that would have earned in, in CalPERS. And the reason we put it in a trust fund instead of sending the money directly to CalPERS is just in case we might need it someday down the road, that we could use it to pay our pension costs for the year. It was giving us that flexibility. But that's the only one that's exposed to the market of all these different, different line items you're looking at.
Okay, good, yeah. Thanks for the clarification. I, I had a very quick note. And the, on page 59, we mentioned Measure C, but it's actually Measure CC in terms of some of the tax revenue. So just as we're making quick corrections before we finalize it, we'll want to note that correctly. And then on page 60, I was, I was surprised to see that we were including like revenue from Fiesta La Bayona when my assumption would be that that wouldn't be happening this summer. And so I, I'd want us to, before we, before we finalize, I'd want us to look at that, that level of detail and make sure that, you know, yes, it probably shouldn't be reflected in the budget, although we haven't made a final determination. But I can imagine that happening, or it not happening, rather. And then for the city manager, the, one of the pieces that I always pay close attention to in, in our budgets are the piece where various departments have made requests for enhancement, and the city manager basically says yea or nay. One of them, the Parks Recreation and Community Services Department had asked for additional staffing to provide childcare at city meetings. But that was denied. And so I just, you know, who knows when we're going to be able to have meetings in real life? But I was hoping that that policy could continue. So for the city manager, would we be able to continue? Is the plan to just make do with the staff that we have, but still continue that practice when it's possible?
Yes, yes, council member. The council's made that decision. And if and when there's need for childcare at these public meetings, we will ensure that it, it happens and will, will, I will ensure there's funding for it.
Okay, thank you. There's a lot more, but I think I'll wait for the rest to go department by department. And again, Ms. Jones, thank you so much for, for your hard work on this document.
Thank you.
Council member Lee.
Yeah, and I'll be pretty brief. I just want to echo the comments of my colleagues. Thanks, you and your team for taking on this sort of unprecedented task and really leading the way. Also, thank you for your presentation. I know we've gotten a lot of emails as a council making suggestions about what we should and should not be when it comes to the budget in the context of COVID-19 and this pandemic. And embedded in a lot, in a lot of those emails were assumptions of things that we already did, but very obviously did not do. I, I think it would be interesting if we could also possibly just make your budget presentation as you present it available separately on our YouTube channel so that anyone who has any questions about the budget can just go to it directly because I think it was a very, very thorough presentation. The only question I have is actually just a curiosity. Do we anticipate any savings in the context of having more employees work remotely or using more technology for certain tasks? Or do we think we'll sort of break even on that transition? I doubt we would make much money, but I'm, I'm just curious about that.
We did factor in a decrease in utilities in our budget.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Vice Mayor, Chris.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Jones, and to Ms. Nola and the rest of your staff. This obviously reflects a tremendous amount of careful consideration and a real understanding of what the core services of the city are. Because of course, we do get lots of, lots of comments about what should stay and what should go. And, you know, we have the benefit and the obligation of seeing the big picture and all the many, many things that city staff provides. And when we talk about cuts, when we talk about hiring freezes, we're talking about services that are not provided or that are provided less well. And the fact that people in the community don't really notice that is a testament to how much harder city staff tends to work and has worked since 2008. And now unfortunately, has to find even more grit to get through this because we never really recovered from the Great Recession. And I think that's exemplified by this budget because it's a significant, lots and lots of significant departures. People will undoubtedly, you know, critique certain things. But this is a budget that I think very clearly explains what is, what's happening and should hopefully convey to people what the strategy is, which is essentially to make very serious and significant cuts in the near term and retain the flexibility to hopefully bounce back quickly if possible or make more painful cuts that people will undoubtedly notice if, if we have to get there. And I'm very hopeful that we don't get there. So no questions. This was incredibly clear for me, and I really appreciate it. And I wanted to thank all of the city staff for all the hard work, and especially the finance department.
Thank you.
Thank you. So first, congratulations to the awards. Just a testament to the hard work that you and your department are doing, and also the quality of the work. So we are always proud of our. So, we are always proud of us receiving, seeing that staff and departments receive those kinds of awards. So, thank you for, for doing that. Good work. I have a few comments. And the first one I, I'm going to ask is sort of a policy around the vacancies that we have frozen and other that, um, that will become available or pop up, or whatever we should call it. That can happen in any department, but it doesn't really reflect what's a priority or not a priority. So, my question is, and this maybe is to the city manager, and how, how do you intend to rebalance these differences that might, if there's a lot of people that for some reason retire or leave a certain department? But there, we actually need to, to fill those, some of those positions. So, what's the plan to, to rebalance it?
Uh, Mayor, um, so, the way I plan to manage this is to leave the hiring freeze in place. And that will mean before any position can be filled, it will require my approval. I will make exceptions. There, there will be positions that we won't be able to, um, you know, eliminate or when we're preparing the budget for next year, we won't be able to keep vacant. I mean, there are certain positions that, you know, I think will need to be filled. But, and you can't predict where the vacancies will occur. But they will occur. And having done this a couple of, several times in my career now, you just have to trust me that we will be creative. We will respond to the vacancies that do occur. It will give us an opportunity in each case to stop and reexamine the way we're operating in that particular manner, to see if we can change, if we can reorganize. Also, sometimes it becomes possible to move employees from one part of the organization to another. To maybe you, um, there's a position that can be filled by someone, and that position that they vacated can then be eliminated. It, it's, um, you know, it ends up becoming maybe a little bit complicated, but it's, it's a way to, um, you know, take advantage of attrition and avoid, you know, trying to avoid employee layoffs. And, and that approach also, hopefully, will secure the cooperation of, of the, the employees so that we all work together to try and ensure that we're, we're able to manage our way through this. But, uh, but that, that's, that is my, that is how I plan to approach it.
Uh, thank you. Then, a request. Will it be possible, and this is for both, uh, city manager and, and our CFO, will it be possible for the city council to get fairly current and updated quarterly report on how we're doing on both the expense side and on the revenue side?
Absolutely. We, we, I think that's a good idea, Mayor. We're in such a dynamic, volatile period. And it's, it's important that we keep the council and the community informed. We, we'd be pleased to do that.
Thank you. And, and then, and then for, for our CFO, I know you had a meeting with the Finance Advisory Committee last week. Do you, do you see a function for the Finance Advisory Committee in, in some of the, the budget questions or some of the reallocation questions that we're going to face during the year? Or, or do you have other more long-term projects for the Financial Advisory Committee to start looking at?
Well, I definitely think that we can involve them with the quarterly reporting that you referred to. We do plan on updating our, and doing analysis on a monthly basis. And so, whatever information that we gather and review, we can certainly sit down with the FAC and review that with them prior to coming to council and get their feedback and input. There's so much going on, you know, I don't know what large projects are needed other than we're just, we're all aware that we need some form of revenue coming in in the near future. And obviously, they can be a part of that conversation as we move forward. Of course, timing is everything. But I definitely feel like whatever revenue strategies that we do implement, you know, they could be a part of that discussion.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. And this, this, this budget is, when I've talked to colleagues around our county on other councils, is after the Santa Monica, uh, sort of problems broke on the news, it became sort of a discussion item among a couple of my colleagues in other councils. So, what I describe, what you, what, what our city manager, John Nakpor, and, and our CFO, Onyx Jones, have done is, I call it, it's a controlled crash landing. What, what you guys have done with this budget now is like Solid did when he was landing on the Hudson River, right? This is, this is sort of a very, very skilled operation to put this together and, and, and have it ready in, in, in time. So, I, I really appreciate that. That doesn't mean that council is not going to have questions and comments and suggestions, which changes on, on all these different items. I'm pretty sure about that. But I'm, I, I really want to say that you have done an extraordinary job to put this together in such a short fashion since the world changed in March. So, thank you for that.